And for being the kind of person who brings joy and positive energy to our school every single day. Congratulations. Next up, we have Kaitlyn Royer. We're thrilled to honor a student who exemplifies excellence in every way. Kaitlyn stands out immediately as a natural leader. And when we look at why that is, it comes down to her incredible work ethic and her commitment to helping others. Kaitlyn is one of the hardest workers we have had the joy of teaching. She puts her very best effort forward in everything she does, whether it's a major class project or a small detail. Her love for learning shows every single day through her effort, her deep curiosity, and her sheer quality of work. She is highly creative and always is coming up with new ideas to go above and beyond, no matter what the assignment. Kaitlyn's impact goes far beyond her work. She sets a genuine and positive example for us all. She is kind, thoughtful, and a wonderful person to be around. If a friend needs help, Kaitlyn is always the first one to step up and offer support and encouragement. This is a person who consistently makes good choices and lives her values. Congratulations, Kaitlyn. If I could have the Westwood staff and family and friends come up for a picture, that would be great. Congratulations, you guys. Good work. We're just gonna scoot back here a little bit. Perfect. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Rock to recognize our honorees from Zimmerman Middle High.
All right. It's fun to do all the students from Zimmerman today. So from Zimmerman Middle School, Emily and Bennett. Congratulations to both of you. We're gonna do Emily first. Emily Johnson, fantastic student and person. As a student, she is constantly trying to help her classmates in class when they don't understand things. She's always greeting people in the halls and classroom, making them feel welcome. It is obvious that Emily cares about her classmates and her school as well. She's a wonderful role model, and we are fortunate to have her in our school. Bennett Milky is a student whose reliability, positive attitude, and commitment to excellence make him a standout among his peers. He consistently demonstrates responsibility by following through on tasks and being someone others can depend on. He approaches every activity with full participation, giving his best effort, no matter what the challenge. His willingness to engage wholeheartedly not only strengthens his own growth, but also inspires those around him. Bennett sets a strong example for his classmates, serving as a role model through his actions, attitude, and leadership. Staff and from Zimmerman Middle and families and friends, if you want to join us for a picture. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. I like your outfit. Very nice. Perfect. All right. Lily Johnson is an exceptional member of our school community and truly embodies what it means to live the Thunder Way. She's a three-sport athlete, a committed musician in our Wind Symphony, and consistently goes above and beyond in her academics. She consistently brings positivity wherever she goes and always leads by example. It's clear she cares about her own success and is committed to lifting up those around her. We're lucky to have her in our school. Madison Fisher is a great role model for students at Zimmerman Middle High School. She sets very high standards for herself and works hard to achieve them. In the classroom, she challenged herself to high-rigger courses this year by taking two AP courses as well as college algebra. Her extracurricular activities include cross-country running and skiing. Both in the classroom and out, she mentors younger students by helping them set high goals for themselves, gently pushing them to be the best they can be. She is highly respected by peers and adults in the building because she's a woman of integrity, kindness, wisdom, and humor. All right, staff and families, come join us for a picture. Congratulations.
And we recognize your achievements, and so thank you to all the parents that make this possible, and all the grandparents, and all the relatives, and all the support, and especially our staff. Thank you. I was gonna mention, this is a good time to exit, families. If you'd like to leave the meeting, you're more than welcome to stay. As we move on with the meeting, it's time for public comment. And just a few reminders of public comment. The board asks each individual to limit their comments to three minutes. In accordance with state law and policy 206, the board must protect the legal rights to privacy of both students and employees. As a result, speakers must refrain from using specific names of any students or employees. If specific names are used, I will need to interrupt you and/or stop the speaker. Also, per policy 206, speakers may not make comments or gestures that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, or abusive. Also, speakers may not make personal attacks against others. And those are some of the ground rules for public comment. And as we move on with the meeting, our first speaker tonight is Dr. Ramya Sevaraj. Did I get that right?
Close it off. Thank you. I'm Dr. Ramya Sevaraj. And as a parent and as an educator at a state university, I just want to start by acknowledging how incredibly rewarding, motivating it is to be a parent in this school district. We have the blessing of administrators, staff, teachers, and you, the school board, who recognizes the importance of authentic learning experiences. So I'm here as a parent of a senior and band booster member to express deep concern and a desperate plea to support not eliminating a stipend for the coaching of a second Red Elks Jazz Band at Elk River High School. If I had more than three minutes, I would call to attention the broader pattern of cuts affecting the arts across districts statewide. But this evening, I want to emphasize the need for us to focus on supporting the Red Elks Jazz Ensemble, not as an issue related to equity, but as an issue related to student opportunity. Having two jazz bands provides our students with varied differentiated opportunities. Union contract negotiations related to staff compensation have been cited as reasoning for the change this year, but essentially no stipend is available for the coaching of the Red Elks Jazz Ensemble. I know it is of utmost importance to each board member sitting here to prioritize solutions that keep students front and center. I urge the leadership to think creatively about how to support staff who are willing to go above and beyond, and booster-funded support in collaboration with the district is an immediately available solution. I want to conclude by leaving you with images from personal narratives. Our daughter discovered classical music at an early age, and in middle school, she picked up two new band instruments and was introduced to jazz. She has since then performed at jazz festivals, auditioned honor bands, and has represented Elk Pride across Minnesota as an all-state and all-conference player. And this is for the past three years. And across the country occasionally, at the University of South Florida's jazz band last summer, at Shell Lake Arts Center the summer before. The Red Elks Jazz Band has undoubtedly been one of the biggest reasons for this trajectory, a starting point in high school where she learned how to play solos and how to enjoy playing with an ensemble. The bridge between being introduced to jazz music in middle school and playing at a very advanced level now with the Black Elk Jazz Band, this is not just the story of our daughter. You will hear from two sophomores here this evening, and there are many, many students who have been part of the Red Elk Jazz Ensemble over the years and have benefited immensely. One final image, Elk River resident Patrick Dwyer is here, who played in the first jazz band at Elk River Senior High in 1966. And I see I'm out of time, but I want to leave you with the image of his pride and joy watching his grandchild play currently with the Red Elk Jazz Ensemble. Clarinet with jazz, an opportunity that would otherwise not be available. Let's make this about opportunity. Thank you so much.
And our next speaker is Ava Larson.
I wanted to start off by thanking you for letting me be here today, and then a small introduction. I'm Ava. I'm a sophomore at Elk River High School, and last year, I was part of the Red Elk Jazz Band. This year, I look forward to being part of the Red Elk again, because that is the only way I'm allowed to participate. With my time spread between two jobs, speech, math league, and figure skating, Black Elk is not an option for me. And I'm not the only student with limited time but unlimited love for music. Today, I wanted to share a few reasons why Red Elk is so incredibly important to Elk River. Red Elk provided opportunities for the nearly 50 kids in our program, which is over double, nearly triple, the amount of participants compared to other jazz bands in the district. Elk River historically has had large bands with 100 or more students in various bands, including concert band, wind symphony, pep bands, and percussion groups. Jazz, as you know, has many benefits, such as improving academic performance and strengthening social connections. I know that I experienced both those things when I was a member. I saw my grades and motivation improve when jazz started, and my friendships seemed to flourish. Another reason Red Elk is so important is the fact that Black Elk and Red Elk are not the same. Black Elk is a large commitment for experienced jazz members to showcase their skills. Red Elk Jazz allows new jazz students to practice and perfect their skills. The Red Elk Band has different rehearsal times and a different focus to build the confidence of skills of new players. Red Elk is so much more than a band, it's a family. I've made many connections through jazz that I have no doubt will last a lifetime. Jazz has taught me how to think on the spot, how to persevere, and how to be an overall better person. I would like for all students this year, and those who come after, to be able to experience the amazing benefits that I had. Last year, I was able to go to one honor band at the Elk River High School and a week-long band camp in Bemidji, and without Red Elk, I would not have the confidence to even sign up. This year, with my newfound confidence, I hope to make the all-state band. Red Elk is also an important part of the community. Both our jazz bands play at the Elk River Swing Dance, an annual tradition that has been going on for over 15 years. The jazz bands bring together the community into a fun night filled with music and laughter. Red Elk has always been the last to play at these nights, wrapping up the dance with the students who have spent months practicing and perfecting those skills. And I'd like to leave you with one question. If we have double, nearly triple, the amount of students, why shouldn't we have double the amount of bands?
Our next speaker tonight is Kate Bannister.
I have a little clip.
My name's Kate Bannister. I'm a sophomore, and that was me. I'm here today as an Elk River Band student to advocate on protecting our Red Elk Jazz Program. I played tenor sax, but I started on trombone, which is where I found my love for jazz. Having two programs at the high school made it so as a freshman, I had a chance to play my best and learn more while senior players were able to play at their level and expand further. However, pushing our program down to one band makes it harder for freshmen to have that same opportunity. You just simply cannot put freshmen against seniors in an audition-based program and expect equal opportunities for both. Now, while I might complain during morning practices, I also discovered that I'm really good at jazz, and I want more musicians to find that too. Last year, I went to a band camp in Shell Lake, and this year, I got into the St. Thomas Honor Band. I would have never even picked up the pencil to sign up if it weren't for the confidence building solos I played in Red Elk. In fact, despite what some may think, the two jazz bands we have are not duplicates. They are back-to-back helpful ensembles that mirror the successful feeder model we have in athletics. Red Elk is often where we students first experience authentic jazz instructions, solo opportunities, and foundational growth that then empower us to later audition and exceed in Black Elk. If ISD 728's mission is to educate, inspire, and empower, then we should have a second jazz program to educate new players on a different music style that they might love, inspire them to try something new, and empower them with the confidence to be heard, heard both with and without an instrument. In addition, music is proven to better mental health, and playing jazz surrounds students with a positive musical environment. Something that could seem as simple as a song or two could greatly improve someone's well-being. Before I leave today, I want to quote some upperclassmen who I admire greatly as both players and as people. It gives students that aren't as developed in jazz band a chance to be able to audition at a more professional level. It's like removing a junior varsity football team. Red Elk helps everyone have a chance. It gets more people involved, so more people have the experience to be in jazz. Let's not support a second program. Let's build a second stage for students to find their voices, their rhythms, and their chance to be heard.
Thank you so much, Kate. Our fourth speaker this evening is Sally Anton.
Good evening. Greetings, Superintendent Elmos and School Board Directors. My name is Sally Anton. I am here today once again to speak on an issue many of you claim to care about, school safety. While I believe some of you truly want safe schools for all children, it has become abundantly clear to many in our community that not everyone on this board shares that commitment equally. I'd like to take a moment here and remind you of the first three values taken directly from the district's websites. One, all people have value. Two, valuing and respecting differences strengthens the individual and the community. Three, people thrive when they feel connected, supported, and affirmed. In August, I stood before you to speak of the lack of support for minority youth, and I'm disappointed to be here with the same message. In my last speech, I highlighted when Directors Nordos, Anderson, Freberg, and Madison spoke against students in the LGBTQ+ community under the guise of protecting girls' sports. Since then, the following has occurred. Several of you used social media to urge the public to fill out a survey about health education in opposition to inclusive teaching in schools. Directors Madson, Nordos, and Freberg were seen on social media posing in front of a sign that was anti-trans at this fall's Atsigo Prairie Festival. Director Nordos is attempting to specifically target a GSA club that a parent was upset about. Let me pause here to remind you that GSA is a safe space for children, and forcing them to come out to parents who may not be supportive obliterates that. Directors Nordos and Anderson at the last policy meeting said they wanted to change the survey policy, mainly so they could prevent pronouns from being asked on Getting to Know You questionnaires. Now, the school board is putting official language that directly flies in the face of the three core tenets I read at the start of my speech. Children learn by watching the behavior of their leaders. You are telling them bullying is acceptable, especially toward anyone considered different. Our students, especially our most vulnerable, deserve to learn in a bully-free environment. They deserve leaders who demonstrate through words and actions that they are valued members of our school community. Once again, one, all people have value. Two, valuing and respecting differences strengthens the individual and the community. Three, people thrive when they feel connected, supportive, and affirmed. You also speak publicly about mental health being important to you. Here are some stats from the Trevor Project about our LGBTQ+ youth. Thirty-nine percent seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. More than one in 10 attempted suicide in the past year, and finally, nearly half experienced bullying in the past year, and those who did reported significantly higher rates attempting suicide. By bullying your transgender population under the guise of protecting girls, you are actively harming the mental health of your children you represent on the school board. While I cannot teach someone without empathy how to feel compassion for vulnerable children, I will continue to speak out publicly to ensure voters see that you do not uphold our district's core values. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. The next speaker is Luke Hegerly.
I'd like to start out by addressing the school board members here in attendance tonight. Hello. On Friday, October 3rd, we were informed that our son will no longer be able to participate in River Valley Percussion Theater 728 due to this program. Moving to a district-run program, and he is currently enrolled in Spectrum Charter School here in Elk River. He has participated in RVBT for the last four winter seasons since 7th grade, along with his fellow Spectrum student in attendance here today with her family for the past two winter and summer seasons. Both students are integral parts of the team, with my son being the section leader and one of two synth players, and his other Spectrum student last season being the bass drum section leader, and is slated to move to one of the two quad players for this upcoming season. Upon hearing this news, I reached out to the district office and have been in communication with leadership here at the district office to no avail or answers. I stand here today to ask three questions. One, why are students who have been participating in RVBT for several years not able to be grandfathered in to the next two seasons as they both will be seniors next year? Why would three other programs being actively co-opted between Elk River High School and Spectrum, that being swimming and diving, gymnastics, and boys' tennis confirmed with the Spectrum principal, will be allowed and not an exception for our students? They do not have the option for a program of this caliber at Spectrum, and they have been able to have it through ISD 728. And third, how would the best solution given to me from district leadership be is to pull our students from Spectrum midsemester and enroll them into Elk River High School? This seems counterproductive to me. In closing, I ask that this board assist our families in doing what is right and allow our students to participate in this upcoming season as well as next year, where the team will be going to world championships in Dayton, Ohio, with all nine seniors to take the win for ISD 728. This is not something that can be done. I ask that ISD 728 leadership attend the information night next week, Monday, October 20th, and address our students, as well as the team in its entirety, as to why our students are not being allowed to participate. Yeah. And I know there's a lot of support back in this area here. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. And our next speaker is Samantha Bochek.
Hello. My name is Samantha Bochek. I'm here tonight as a parent who believes in truth and accountability. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Recently, my 7th grade son took a pre-test that asked, "All men are created equal. Who does 'all men' refer to?" The answer marked correct was rich, white, Christian. That is historically false and deeply misleading. Using the term "does" makes this present tense. When this was written, "all men" referred to land-owning men. This had nothing to do with Christianity. The founders believed land ownership showed men had responsibility and a personal stake in the success of our new nation. Not all signers of the Declaration were Christian. Many were dais or secular thinkers who built this country on freedom of religion, not one of faith or ideology. To try to rewrite history by teaching students that "all men are created equal" means "rich, white, Christian" isn't just inaccurate, it seeks to define our students as victims or oppressors. It replaces education with ideology. The founding fathers clearly believed in freedom of religion and the separation of church and state, ensuring that no faith would ever define equality or citizenship. So why would anyone want to rewrite one of our nation's founding statements in the way that distorts its meaning? I'll let each of you answer for yourselves. The assistant principal told me that teachers pull materials directly from the internet without district vetting or oversight from the network. That's also why the school struggles to control what students access online, like gaming websites that aren't blocked yet. The lack of accountability is unacceptable, and it's exactly how bias ends up in our classroom. Vandenberg Middle School didn't immediately address the issue and still allowed students to take this test. That means students were graded on false ideology. Let that sink in. One, this is not a request. These are my asks. The first one's a demand. I'm demanding our children to be taught facts, not ideology. Two, here's my options for resolution. Create two separate networks in the buildings, one for teachers and one for students, with approved website lists that all parents can view and get approval. Resolution two would be one shared network, but every website must be pre-approved. All new site requests should be tracked formally, and parents can see them. The third option is failure. Do nothing and continue putting our children at the mercy of each teacher's personal ideology. As a parent, the ones ultimately responsible for raising these children, we deserve full access to truthful curriculum, including every online source used, and for teachers to be held accountable when these teachings, when they're teaching their ideology. Thank you for your time and standing up for integrity.
Thank you, Samantha. Our last speaker is Clara Severson.
Chair Anderson and members of the board, my name is Clara Severson. I'm here as a concerned parent with two young boys in the district. I come to you tonight deeply insulted by the legislative platform you've proposed. It is absurd, though sadly not unbelievable, that you would attach our incredible district to a platform that bullies children. Your so-called priority to protect girls' sports and uphold Title IX is not about protecting anyone, it's about playing politics with our students' lives. Earlier this year, your own school perception survey reached over 5,000 students. When asked if they were a boy or a girl, 5% responded "other" or "I don't want to say." If that sample reflects our 14,352 students, that's more than 700 children in the district who would not readily identify or share that they are a boy or a girl. 700 kids. Your platform tells those 700 kids, you do not matter, you do not belong, and you are not welcome here. On top of that, if this board were to pursue this policy barring transgender students from playing sports, I have to ask, who is going to enforce it? Who will inspect our children's bodies and determine whether they're allowed to play? Who will be responsible for outing students, humiliating Who will be responsible for outing students, humiliating them, and turning what should be a safe educational environment into one of surveillance and shame? Policies like this don't protect anyone. They institutionalize bullying, force staff into impossible and unethical positions, and tell kids that their very existence is a problem to be policed. So let me be clear. While you use your nonpartisan positions to chase partisan applause, I will stand with our students, every student, and I will never respect any adult who bullies children.
Moving on now to general reports, the superintendent report. Superintendent Elmos.
Yes, good evening, board members. My report is linked in your packet. I'll just give you the quick summary of what's listed there. First and foremost, just as Chair Anderson and I have been planning board agendas, we've looked at a student panel for November. So our high schools will bring some students to us, and we'll get a chance to ask some questions of our kids, and the opportunity to say, what is the student experience like in our schools? So if you have questions or topics specifically that you would like the kids to address, please send those to Chair Anderson and I as we're working on the questions to get that panel ready to go. The next one in my report is the budget. This is the time of year where we're working on the audit to wrap up the budget and to close last year's books. It really is the first step for us as we start to plan for next year's budget. So we really can't plan for next year without making sure we know where we ended last year. So that work is underway right now, and that'll lead us into a discussion at our October work session where we talk about budget planning priorities for the upcoming school year for next year, actually. So just wanted you to know that that audit is underway, and you'll be hearing more about that coming up. The Community Facilities Task Force, I'm sure we're going to hear more with the facilities update, but that work is underway, and if you've been to those meetings, I know many of you have. Exciting times to hear our communities talk about our facilities, even to dream and ask a lot of questions. We have been through these stages of providing the information to them to kind of build background knowledge, and now they are meeting to work on some of those ideas to generate with the task that we've given them. So exciting. If you haven't signed up for the ones coming up, please be sure to do that, board members. Upcoming board topics, Chair Anderson and I continue to work through the annual calendar of events and topics. So if you have topics that you'd like the board to consider, board members, please send it to us. And last but not least, on the agenda tonight under the Personnel section, we have the retirement of Londa Chambers listed there. I wanted to just take a minute. We're going to get a chance to celebrate Londa, but Londa has been with the district for 40 years. She is absolutely an institution in this organization, and if you need to know something, Londa is the person in this community. So we are in the process of updating the job description. I joke that we just have to put "see Londa" in the job description, but we are going to get lots of time to celebrate Londa, but she's going to leave a huge hole in our system, and we're excited for what's next for her in retirement. So thanks, Londa. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Elmos. Onto committee reports, facilities, Director Steinbrecker.
Yes, thank you, board members. So as Superintendent Elmos stated, so our next meeting will be November 3rd. Task force is well underway. I've been at the last couple of meetings, and they are working hard. It was really cool at the last one to see they were brainstorming ideas. Chair Anderson and myself were there, and just all the ideas, they were thinking about all the possibilities, the stars being the limit. It was just very cool to see it. This group is extremely engaged. They're working really hard, and appreciate Director Stangler and Franzen for all their work now. As they come up with these ideas, then they're going back and putting, what can this look like? What do these cost? What are these options? So it's really cool. It is definitely well underway. With that, then, the Facilities Committee is also looking at the Level 4 setting. So the board had directed the Facilities Committee to look at that and bring some options forward. So at our work session, we will be bringing forward three potential options that the Facilities Committee has for Level 4, and we'll talk about those more in depth as we're kind of putting the fine touches on them. So with that, I'd stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Director Steinbrecker. Policy Committee, I'll give an update on that. The Policy Committee met on September 15th, and we moved six policies forward to their first reading, which is at this meeting. Only Policy 520 was held back for possible revisions. And then there are seven policies on the agenda for the second reading, and Policy 506 is on student discipline, is a yearly policy, and the others are all three-year cycle policies. Any questions about policies? And our next meeting is next Monday at 4 o'clock here in this room. Onto appointments, Northwest Suburban Integration School District, Vice Chair Freiberg.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I attended the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board meeting on September 17th. We approved meeting minutes, the summer check registers, and the 25-26 policy review schedule. Most of the meeting focused on the 2024 to 2026 Strategic Action Plan, which highlights four main priorities: magnet schools, college and career readiness, student and family engagement, and professional development for staff. Each area includes some clear goals, things like expanding magnet and career programs, strengthening collaboration between the member districts, and increasing family involvement. We also went over the executive director's goals for that year, talked about some upcoming leadership transition, and discussed the ideas of each district naming an alternative board member in case their main board member cannot attend for next year.
That's it. Thank you, Director Vice Chair Freiberg. Onto Minnesota State High School League, Director Weiss.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. A couple of quick inner district updates. Fall sports are starting to close their regular seasons, prepare for their playoffs, which will start as early as October 21st. Winter activity registration is now open on our high school website, so please check that for any winter activities. Thank you to those who continue to email and speak out regarding variety activity programs. We always appreciate the passionate support for developing and growing our student activities, so appreciate that from all of you. Want to also recognize that the Minnesota State High School League Hall of Fame will include Elk River's Paul Martin this April 2026. The spotlight, as stated by the High School League, Martin is arguably the best all-around athlete to ever play at Elk River High School. In football, he was a state-record sitting wide receiver. He set then career records of 189 receptions for 3,009 yards while being a three-time All-Match Row and two-time All-State selection. In baseball, he was an all-conference player and a threat at the plate and in the field. He was a Minnesota Mr. Hockey Award winner his senior year and the prestigious Mount Olivet Lutheran Church Award winner given the Minnesota's Top Scholar-Athlete. He went on to play hockey for the University of Minnesota and had a 15-year career in the National Hockey League. So we want to say congratulations to Elk River alum there. From the High School League updates, the National Federation of State High School Associations released last month their annual participation results. Minnesota ranks 10th in total athletics participation with 233,347 student athletes. And in addition, and if you add in the other activities like music, robotics, debate, et cetera, we had 277,733 participants. Fastest-growing sports include boys' volleyball, which was just introduced in the last few years, wrestling, both with the expansion of a girls' division, which has grown over 400% in the last three years, and in addition, the boys' division continues to grow at a 26% growth rate in the last three years. Debate has also increased 17% over the last two years. Minnesota continues to be a national leader in adapted sports, with bowling, hockey, soccer, and softball available to those students. Expanding lead governments to the 9th grade teams and 9th graders has been a significantly impactful change. This was newly brought forward this year and went into effect in August. This supports insurance coverages and additional health and safety requirements, and it's in line with high school grade models at nearly all schools, being 9 through 12. The Board of Directors meeting was held on October 22nd. Following that meeting, there was a Star Tribune article that was brought to my attention where we did have, where Vice Chair Freiberg did attend the meeting to request in person. She was denied the opportunity to deny public comment, as public comment is only open for items noted on the approved agenda. No notification was made to myself as the High School League rep, and no notification, to my knowledge, was made to Chair Anderson or Superintendent Elmos in advance of the attendance. She was then quoted in the Star Tribune article as representing IST 720 and making a call to action to the High School League regarding a pending legal case. This is a misrepresentation of the board, and the statements that were made or the actions called to had not been part of group discussions or had any formal action taken from the board to represent. In addition, we have, we have over the last several weeks received two resolutions from board members to be reviewed. The first resolution came to us on August 10th. Vice Chair Freiberg proposed a resolution titled "Supporting the Right of Coaches and Teams to Forfeit Games for Safety Reasons Without Retaliation." This revised version of this was sent to us on August 11th. On September 8th, the resolution was sent to our legal counsel for review. The legal counsel responded with significant concerns raised regarding to health and safety policies and procedures in place, as well as a significant liability risk to the district. The resolution was tabled before it made a public agenda. On October 3rd, the board received a resolution proposal made by Director Nordos via an email from Chair Anderson. On October 6th, the resolution was sent to legal counsel after receiving two, one significant and one probably minor update. These changes were significant. They were not shared with the board until received a redlined version on October 10th. There were significant redlined options made to that resolution, as you could see throughout the full correspondence with legal counsel. 212 today, we received another email chain with additional changes to the language and intent between Director Nordos, Chair Anderson, and legal counsel. There is a clear suggestion of manipulation to certain language to be used in the proposal. A clean version was not ever shared with the board for review. At 4:03 PM, we received an email stating that there isn't sufficient sponsorship or support to move forward. This has been removed from the agenda. In the meantime, we have spent hundreds of hours and thousands of taxpayer dollars for something that in the end we cannot take effective action on, and it only opens our district up to more risk. It has been my recommendation on this topic, all along to let the legal process play out at the federal and state levels, to not put our district and our High School League eligible students at risk, even if some don't agree with the policy or the laws in place on either side of the debate. It is our responsibility to take care of our kids, our coaches, and our district. I will continue to do just that. I will choose to let the politics play themselves out outside of our boardroom. Our kids are not political weapons. They deserve leaders that lead them through challenges, not use them to push forward personal agendas. This is a personal, emotional, and highly politically-leveraged topic. As individual board members, you can sign petitions both sides of the debate. There's petitions out there on both. You can campaign for candidates, and you can ultimately vote based on your personal values, but I stand firm that school board position should remain largely nonpolitical. We should do our best to see past the rhetoric and confidently lead our district forward.
For Director Weiss.
I do. I would like to know if that's all right. I went as a public, or a regular public person when I went to the Minnesota High School League's meeting. You could have been there as well. You weren't there in attendance, and a lot of big stuff could have happened. So everybody was wondering, what is going to happen? What will happen to our district with the federal, you know, dollars, billions of dollars we're talking about? So even, I have my speech here if you'd like me to read it. I wasn't able to speak, but I did give a copy to every single board member, and then they thanked me, and I stayed for the meeting to see how that all works, because none of this High School League's meetings are recorded. It's really hard to follow how everything works, and I don't plan to miss another meeting with them on that level.
As a response to that, I was aware of the agenda going into it. That particular topic was not on the proposed agenda. I did have a doctor's appointment that particular day at that time, but I did read the notes as I do every month, and I provide an update to the board, as I have for several months on this topic and will continue to do so. As far as how you represented yourself, you were quoted in the Star Tribune as an Elk River School Board representative, so it's hard to say you were there as a personal representation when the Star News stated you were an Elk River Board Member.
Well, it says, "I come before you today as a mom and concerned taxpayer," right here. And that's the copy that they all have, so...
And that's great, but it was publicly reported as a representative of the district. So I think we need to be aware of, again, our representation, the roles we play, the hats we wear when we are out in public. It is hard to be a public person and then claim, "I'm just here as a parent," when you're actually at a public, public meeting. It's hard to do that. You have to be respectful of that.
No, I'm glad I went, and I will go to every meeting for that, to understand how the High School League operates. It was very eye-opening, so I will see you there. But I have every right, every single right to go to those meetings. That is something true to my heart. I don't think it is fair for girls' sports. How can you look your daughter in the eye and say, "I know you've worked really hard and you've trained and whatever," but it's just not fair? You know, or that is fair. I mean, it's just, it's your opinion versus mine, and I do stand with girls and our coaches, and I...
Well, you're making an assumption on what my opinion on the topic is. I'm supportive of what the process needs to be and putting the right roles and responsibilities, accountability where they live.
I'm going to interrupt. I suggest we move on right now. I think both of you have got a chance to state your opinions, and there's going to be further opportunities here to do that. Any other comments, Director Nordos?
Yeah, I'd like to be recognized. Thank you. So I wasn't expecting to discuss this tonight. I thought, wasn't expecting the report to be an attack on a fellow board member, and there were some misconceptions. Point of order. A board member cannot be interrupted while speaking by another board member chair.
Point of order taken.
Thank you.
Please do not interrupt the speaker, and we're going to ask the audience to limit interruptions and other board members. Thank you.
So I'd just like to clarify a little bit of note on the resolution that was proposed, because I think it was, it may have been not fully represented as to what it was. So this board made a decision because, one, our Rogers Girls High School softball team was affected by decisions at the Minnesota State High School League, and they're citing an interpretation of Title IX versus other civil rights acts. Our interpretation was sent to the lawyer for an opinion. The lawyer did not give us an opinion. They rewrote it into a legal brief, so it no longer reflected the intent of what was submitted to the board. That's why it's not on today's agenda. We didn't have time as a board to discuss it. It was out of respect for everybody. We could have made a motion to amend the agenda to bring the other one forward. We did not. We're trying to be respectful. We wanted to have a discussion openly. What it was pointing at is that currently, the federal government, two agencies with the federal government have done an investigation and found us in violation of Title IX. That affects our funding. It could affect our funding. We could lose up to $4 million in our budget. At the same time, the state, and let me back up there, so that was an investigation that found results, right? On the counter side, the state has made an attorney general opinion. It's no more legal than the federal. It's an opinion. So currently, the Minnesota State High School League has a choice of which one they're going to follow, and they have chosen to follow the state, which affects us in multiple ways, mainly funding. It is playing out in the courts, and it's going to make a decision in the courts. But in the meantime, our intent was to urge the state High School League to side with the decision that had been made by the federal government that affects our funding so that we can continue to have that funding until the courts make a decision.
Clarification, the Minnesota State High School League is actually a nonprofit, and of itself does not receive federal funding. So it cannot cut funding to the High School League programs in place. Now, it could, it could, it could suggest that it could cut funding from other areas. They have tried to do that in other states towards food funding, all those types of things, and it is not siding in the favor of the federal government in those circumstances, but many, again, those cases are playing themselves out in the court. Again, my recommendation from the beginning has to let the self play itself out. This is a debate between federal law and state law, and it needs to be worked out within the courts. The Minnesota's High School League could change their policy 10 times over, and it's still, if it's in conflict with state law, then there's other repercussions that can happen. So as their body, they have to, I would suggest that they do have to keep their policy consistent until they receive a change. They have to receive a change from those, from the governing bodies that they represent. So until the federal and the state courts figure this out, until the courts figure this out, we've got to let that kind of play out. In the meantime, yes, as individual board members, you have every right to support whatever side of the topic you want. You can sign the petitions, you can go to the extra board meetings, you can talk to the press, all you want. You have absolute right to do that. Nobody's questioning or challenging that or threatening your right to do that. You can do that as an individual board, but the way this is playing out, the way the Legalese is working and played out, the process itself is not something that I can support.
Any other?
Just clarifying, so I wasn't talking about funding from the high school...
Just clarifies, so I wasn't talking about funding from the high school league. It's federal funding. We received nearly $4 million in federal funding that the Department of Education has threatened to withhold and could, pending that break. So that, that's what I was referring to. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can I add something?
Director Madsen?
What Sarah was saying is that we need to wait for the law to change, or lawmakers to make a change. So therefore, our 2026 legislative platform, we are working towards doing that then, correct?
Yes. This, yeah, we're going to be getting to that. It's ahead on the agenda, but that's in a draft form right now.
I have a statement about how I feel about that. Should I wait until we get to the legislative?
Let's wait till we get to the legislative platform, because we're still on Minnesota High School League.
It's related, but I'll wait till the legislative part.
Any other discussion before we move on? Director Weiss, advocacy, board development, MSBA?
Yep. Again, once again, MSBA, the conference will be held in January 15th to 16th in Minneapolis. Five of the seven board members have committed to attending at this point in time. We hope the schedules will allow for, for full attendance at all or part of that conference coming up in January. Phase one, four through workshops are available for those that may need to complete or looking for a refresher. There's both in-person and virtual options available to do so. The COSBA National Conference will be held March 13th to 15th in Louisville, Kentucky. At this time, three of the seven board members have responded. Interest and availability in attending. Again, hope more that, more are willing and able to do so, as that is a, a meaningful event to attend. And at the last work session, TeamWorks led our Sep, led our September work session on board development, and there's additional sessions that are available for consideration, should we want to employ them to do that, and we can talk through those opportunities at a later date, but...
Okay. Any questions for Director Weiss? I realized I had skipped AMSD. Director Madsen, Director Hamblin, do you have any comments about AMSD?
Yes, I'm giving the report tonight. The most recent AMSD meeting occurred Friday, October 3rd. The meeting started with the executive committee report, which approved the new AMSD membership for the Forest Lake School District. Then we had a guest speaker who was Susan Brower, and she is the Minnesota State Demographer. And she explained some trends in the population of the state of Minnesota, and here are a few things I thought were interesting from her report. She said that birth rates have been declining statewide. The declining birth rates are not only happening in Minnesota, it's also happening across the nation as well as globally. She believes this is tied into the social and economical trend, and she does not expect to see a turnaround anytime soon. ISD 728 School District was listed as the sixth fastest-growing school age population in the state from the years 2020 through 2023, and we increased by 11%. The 94 corridor continues to be the fast-growing region of the state, including our Hatzio and Rogers cities, while the school age population in the metro counties have been declining. The workforce is starting to feel the impact of population aging, as the baby boomers have reached retirement age. And since we're now an older population, that's putting a downward pressure on our state's growth. We're having fewer babies, we're older and not growing as much, and that means that we'll have to depend on migration from other states, as well as international immigration. And she stated that in '23, '24, there were 30,000 net number of people that we added to the state of Minnesota that were international immigrants. And as a result, the racial and ethnic diversity in Minnesota's school age population continues to increase. 20% of children in the state of Minnesota have a foreign-born parent, and all this was, all these facts were interesting to hear about the state demographics, because we are currently looking at our school district demographics with the task force and other things going on. So if any board members are interested in seeing the full report, it is available in last week's board update.
Thank you. Director Madsen, any questions? If not, we'll move along to governance. We have our 25, 26 school board goals. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the committee for working on them. I know you guys have been working on them for a while, and lots of revisions to them. I appreciate it, and so, thanks for the work on them.
Director Nordos?
Couple of questions on it. First of all, I'd just like to note that we had discussed at a work group meeting when we first went over these goals and discovered that one of the issues we had in them not moving more smoothly forward was the fact that there is no evaluative committee. We had agreed that Robert's rules require us to vote as a board on committee, on making a new committee. A committee cannot be formed by a chair or renamed by the chair, and goals cannot be assigned, or work to a committee, even if it did exist, cannot just be assigned by the chair. It needs to be voted on by the board. I don't want to go backwards on that. All I want to say is, we had agreed to that, so in the future, I would ask that we do that in the right, right way and follow Robert's rules, please. Having said that, the, the only question I have about this is under safety and well-being of students and staff. I have been outspoken and adamant about this, and it was a deal breaker for me. Discipline had to be in there. I've been pushing and pushing and pushing to get support for the rest of this board, to give the administration direction on focusing on improving our discipline policy to make it both more effective and consistent. I realize that there's more to what's going on in our schools than, than with it, that, than discipline, meaning all by itself in a nutshell. I realize there's emotional parts of it and all these other things, right? And that's what some of this is intended to get to. But the fact is, the survey that I'm drawing the data from, where it talked about our lowest score across two segments was discipline. It also included areas in that survey for safety and well-being. Do, you know, do students have someone they can talk to, a teacher? Are they receiving mental health services? Those were included in there and did not receive the low scores that discipline did. So my concern here is, it's mentioned only as a secondary measurement. It's not, it's not a goal to actually improve these things that have been asking us to improve, and it's not even a measurement on itself. We're not even saying we're going to absolutely set measurements for discipline and try and improve these things. It's saying we will consider using discipline as a measurement with all these other things. So I would have liked to see that be a main goal. And I'll just pause. There's some other questions I have, but I'll just pause, because I, I think there's a little disconnect on this. The reason I'm pushing so much on discipline is it's not in the policy. We haven't changed the policy, and I agreed to let that go as-is, 506. And it's not in the strategic plan, so this is all we've got, because the administration needs guidance, and they need to hear the board say this is important to them. So if it's not in our goals and it's not clear, the administration isn't going to act on it, right? So I'll see what others think.
I think I would like to know more about discipline, if we can get some more information about how discipline works. I don't know, I don't have any specific questions. I know we had a good conversation about that, but that would be my recommendation, is that we learn, before we put anything in place, that we want to see this happening. We want to know more about what it is we're looking at.
And Director Nordos and Director Hamblin, just to let you know that, we're talking about putting a framework together on discipline metrics. And matter of fact, I gave them an example from another school district, Superintendent Elmos, tonight, or earlier today, I should say, about how they do measurements. And so that is on our radar right now, is to put a document together that would outline some key metrics on how discipline is measured and reported. The thing is, is we don't have that framework. It doesn't exist on a board level yet, so we have to put that together. So keep bugging us, because we need to get that done. So, and that's what the, the goals are going to drive that initiative.
The goal is going to drive the data first, so we can have the data to then fully understand it. Because when I look at the student survey, the school perception survey, I don't see the discipline issue based on what was presented to us, the reviews, and what we talked about in our board retreat. So I feel that this will provide us more data that the board is looking for to first understand, do we have a problem?
Can I recognize?
Yes, Director Nordos.
So out of, out of, two out of the three, discipline had the lowest scores. I'm not making that up, and I'm not looking at it. It's not my interpretation. Discipline, effectiveness, and consistency in both the teachers and students were the lowest scores out of the whole survey. And under the parents, being informed earlier was a pretty low score. So why don't you see that as being a top issue of ours?
When it was presented to us, again, we probably need to bring this back out of a work session then and go through it, because what was presented to us from the gentleman's name, Darren, it was not on there. Yes, it was there. We want to continue to monitor. I want to be clear. Student discipline, safety is important, but I don't see it, and I didn't see it on there, as a red item of turn all of our resources towards it. Continue to maintain it. I think putting this data together to understand it better is great, but again, based on what I understood, I received, what Darren presented, it is not a red, it is not a turn your resources towards it, you know, in that manner. So I guess we probably need to talk about it again in a work session.
Superintendent Elmos?
Yeah, I think that data is important, because if you look at our data on its own, I would agree with you that it was at the bottom. We presented it as the comparable across the comparable schools, and it was in the area. But it depends which way the board wants to look at the data. We may need to decide if we want to look at it one way, by question, or by in its entirety as a comparable, or not, right? Because if you look at it different ways, it can mean different things.
And, and we have to accept, sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The other thing I would say, that I would ask the board to think about on this topic, is what does success look like with student discipline? You know, we are happy to bring this data and develop the framework, but I would just ask you to think about, what does it look like? Is more suspensions a success in the data? Is it more accountability for kids? What does that look like when we actually bring that forward? We can totally bring you the data, and I, as I've talked to the committee and read this, I see that as our marching orders, to bring you the data so we can start that discussion.
I think it's important how we do review the survey, because if we want to look at it as a whole for these three items, but then change it individually for these two, we can't do that. So we got to look at it as a whole, which my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Elmos, but when Darren presented it to us, he presented it to us as a whole, correct?
Yes. And we've talked about having an additional work session to scrub that data a little bit more, you know, on the school perceptions.
So some of this conversation wraps into my next question, because we're talking about data, and, and, like, the only measurement of success is expulsions, and, and how many times A or B or C happens and that's not, right? We have, we've done the survey, and that was a baseline, so some of this might just be done by administrative policy, right? If the board says to the, to the administration, "This is something we think needs to be done," then they're going to do it, just like they have with academics. So that's, I guess, all I was looking for, and this is an example of what I was getting at. So the second measurement says, "Review progress in annual school, school perception survey from staff, students, and parents." We review it. Do we meet our goal? If it gets worse, do we still meet our goal? It's just to review it, right? We don't actually expect to improve it.
I, I think one of the problems that we have is, the first time you launch a survey, you're getting a baseline metric, and it's a reference point. So survey number two will establish a little bit of comparison data, and then as you move, now you can do some goal-setting, because hopefully we'll get more participation, because one of the goals of the school perception survey was to have a third party do this, so everybody would feel comfortable, because it doesn't come into this office. It goes to school perceptions over in, is it Wisconsin?
Or no?
Yeah, Minnesota. I'm sorry, I'm thinking Darren's from Wisconsin. But it goes into their office, they process the data, and then they give us a report back. So internally, we do not process the data, so it's, comes fully, fully intact with no redactions. And then we also get comments back from school perceptions, and what they do is, they use actually AI to filter the comments, to look for common themes. So nobody can be traced back to a particular comment, and it secures that data in that survey even more, and that's why we went with them.
Correct. And Director Nordos, I look at this, and if we see this data in June, July, and it's massively red, we don't have to just point back to our goal and says, "All it can do is review it." At that time, the board can direct the superintendent, or at any time. So I would fully understand if we got all of this data back, had two years' worth of results, and let's say for some reason it's going down, discipline is far worse, et cetera, it is nothing for the board to make a motion, make a resolution, whatever we want to do, to direct the superintendent on how to handle this. But again, right now, the way I see this is, we need to get all the data to truly understand what's going on.
Any other comments?
Anyone else on discipline? So I have one more, and this is just a question on opinion. On the very last one, for facility assessment, it says, "Facilities for Setting For Programming in Compliance with Federal State Guidelines," the measurement being that the federal, setting for program compliance requirements for adoption by 2026. So what's the measurement on that? Is that saying that we're just going to come up with a plan, or is it saying we're going to put money into fixing it? Or, I mean, I shouldn't say fixing it, that came out wrong. There's currently three solutions, right?
Correct.
And one of them is to leave things as-is, and I don't know if that's the right one or not, but is this requiring us not to use that third solution?
It would be requiring us to take in consideration the compliance requirements.
So the, the way I read that is, if we did the, leave it internal like it is in each building, right? Administration has come back and said, "That is going to be all but impossible to meet compliance," right? Because it changes for all the reasons we've talked about, and you're going to see more about that in our work session. So I would say, we as a board would have to understand, if we direct administration to do that, and to try to be in compliance, that we may not, right? It was an option we looked at, and once administration vetted it, they do not feel that we would be in compliance with it. So we would have to understand them risks as a board. So in my opinion, it's something we looked at, we understand the risks, and there's two other options that would make us compliant.
Thanks. And that's what I wanted the board to make sure they heard, is that this goal is setting ourselves up to have two options.
Essentially, yes. Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Director Freiberg?
Yes, I have a question. Director Steinbrecker, did we ever have you reach out to those intermediate school districts to see, to become a member to serve those Level 4 students? What that process would look like? I would like that information, just to make sure we, the board, all of us have that information. Was that something that the task force did, or the, I'm sorry, the committee?
The committee did. I don't think we took it very far, but we can certainly look into that. Superintendent Elmos, hold.
Yeah, we have looked into that multiple times, and those intermediates often have waiting lists, so you'd be at the mercy of them. If you decided to join, you may not even have space for your kids. So we don't believe that that's a viable option for us at this time.
But could we still get that information? I have heard from just a source that once you become a member, and maybe they don't have to include your district, or what that vetting process is, but then, once you are a member, there is no waiting list. And maybe that's not clear, but if we could just get that information as a board, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that's something I would rely on the board to give us direction on, because the, the facilities committee has spent a little bit of time talking about that, and that's one we were able to dismiss. So if the board would want to do that differently, we would want to know and get some quick direction on that.
I can, I know that there's generally a really long waiting list for those places. As a therapist, I have tried to get, help get kids in those places, and there's very long waiting lists. Big need, and the need's only increasing, unfortunately.
Any other comments? If not, we'll call the question. The motion is to recommend the school board approve the 25, 26 school board goals as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to our legislative platform, this is in a draft. Director Franzen? Director Franzen is going to summarize.
I'm here tonight to share our draft of the 2026 legislative platform. This is in draft form with some recommendations from administration and school board members included. The intent for this document is something that we use as we reach out and work with our legislators that represent our area and the state to help them understand the needs and advocacy on behalf of our ISD 728 community and students. In that document, the very top document helps to get, you know, give some understanding of who we are and how we are positioned within the district, and a little bit about our background, so the legislatures, legislators have an opportunity to kind of get some context about who we are. The next section gets into our platform statements. So the first one we have there is stable, equitable, and sustainable funding. The first subcategory being looking at the unemployment insurance and paid leave, essentially asking in that category to just fully fund those new mandates that are imposed on school districts to cover those new expenses. The second one is special education revenue, looking to reduce those cross subsidies for our sped programming and ELL expenses to cover the needs for those students. Compensatory is to look to continue to hold harmless for districts that get negatively impacted by the new formula that was put in place. There's a request for a formula increase to just help keep up with the rising costs of, operational costs for the district. One looking specifically at food service funds, allowing, requesting for an allowance of broader use of the funds that are currently dedicated to certain elements within the food service statute, looking to use those for additional resources in our food service programming. And then the last one there is the local optional revenue, looking for adjustments to reflect the inflation increases that have been, since the program was put in place starting in 2014. Our next category is enhancing safe schools and student mental health support, looking for opportunities to expand funding for those safe school initiatives to enable better responses to student trauma, safety concerns, mental health challenges, and social, emotional, developmental needs of our learners, and then again, the rising cost that it takes for us to support those. The next category here is the protecting girls' sports and upholding Title IX. This is a recent addition that came from some school board members. I'm happy to turn it over. I don't know a lot of the context and background of the inclusion here, so I can certainly turn it over for the intent.
Basically, I can just speak with it quickly. The whole issue with Title IX in the state of Minnesota is in the courts right now, and there is, the state legislature and the governor need to have.
This, so this statement here says, consider changes to the Minnesota Human Rights Act to allow Minnesota High School League to comply with Title IX of the Civil Rights Act, based upon the September 30th, 2025 ruling by the United States Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services. So it's just protecting girls' sports.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. The next category is local control and flexibility. This is one that we've had, been requesting for quite a while to look at those mandates that are put in place and the opportunities for districts to have more control over some of those funding pieces. So things like reevaluating how fund balances can be used across categories, broadening the use, again, of those Fund $2, extending the substitute teacher pilot program without maintaining the $200 minimum pay requirement, adjusting eligibility criteria for student support personnel aid, personnel aid, and considering changes to the non-exclusionary discipline law as well, too. Then this last category here, the implementation timelines for new legislation, again, this was a newer category, so happy to turn it over if there's more to speak to on it.
I can speak to that. So it reads, ensure implementation timelines are realistic by requiring at least one full year between the passage of new legislation is required implementation unless it's requested by the school districts. And this prevents situations where laws passed in May may be enacted by July 1st of the calendar year, which places unnecessary strain on school districts and undermines successful compliance. What happens is, as you've seen in the last session, an omnibus bill comes along, and they passed it without really reading it or understanding it, and then we have to wait a few months, but we have to pass a preliminary budget, but we don't know what's in the bill. And then what happens is all these mandates come out, and then our budget kind of goes awry. And so what we're saying is give us some breather room before you put additional mandates upon school districts unless they ask for it. So that's the intent of that.
Thank you. So that's the recommendations for those platform proposals. The document also includes on the backhand side, all of the different legislators that represent our district area, and with their contact information as well, too, for how to reach out and share with them. So that is the draft proposal of our current 2026 legislative platform. I can certainly take questions at this time.
This is in draft form right now, so every board member has the opportunity to add or delete or change.
Last year's platform was a lot of these items on it, correct? We moved it forward?
Correct. Yep.
And so last year, our legislative platform really got no traction, our legislators really did not help support our district.
Well, they did, they did support the district, but you can't, you, the legislature was kind of in abeyance since they were tied, so they couldn't get anything through. And the governor has to sign the bills anyway.
Seems like a lot of items to me, if we struggle to get stuff done down there, to just pile on that many more. I wonder if an approach of taking less and more, you know, ones that would directly affect us, I shouldn't say directly affect us, but ones that we maybe have a chance of getting. I mean, in the past, we've always had better luck being able to get things that aren't controversial, right? I mean, you look at like broaden the use of Fund $2, that's our food service fund, correct? So I mean, that's one that's really not controversial, right? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, right? Giving us control of that, to use that in the general fund to help with staffing, et cetera. So I just look at this, and it just seems like a lot, and looking at our legislator and what they got done last year and what's going to get done this year, it seems like this is going to be a struggle, to be honest.
Director Madsen?
I personally used the legislative platform that we created last year when I went to the Capitol, and I spoke with Senator Lucero and Brian Lawrence and Walter Hudson were the ones, and Andrew Matthews as well. They were the ones that were available and they're scheduled to meet that day, and they were thankful to have a list of things and talking points. So when they are on the floor, they can see what do our districts need so that they can use examples or have that information available. So they do appreciate having ideas.
Director Hamlin?
Yep, I'm definitely not in support of the Title IX one that's on there. I have a little bit of thing I wrote here. I want to speak personally against any proposal to ban transgender athletes from participating in school sports based on so-called safety and integrity concerns. I say this as a mom of four daughters who all played high school sports. Safety in sports is important, but it's already protected by the rules, training, and supervision that apply to every athlete. We don't need to single out transgender students to keep people safe. There's no solid evidence showing that transgender athletes make sports more dangerous. Governing bodies like the NCAA and the Olympics already have policies that ensure fair and safe competition, and schools can follow those same science-based guidelines. Safety concerns are often used as a pretext for discrimination. Historically, similar arguments were made to exclude women from contact sports and people of color from integrated teams. Today, trans athletes are disproportionately targeted by bans, even though there's no epidemic of injuries linked to their participation. Excluding trans athletes based on generalized fear rather than specific evidence perpetuates stigma and undermines the principle of inclusion that sports are meant to uphold. Transgender athletes participating in girls' and women's sports do not undermine fairness, safety, or integrity. Instead, their inclusions align with both a scientific understandings of athletic performance and the core values of equity, sportsmanship, and opportunities in athletics. Variations exist among all athletes. Natural differences such as height, body composition, and genetic traits exist against, across all competitors. No single factor like testosterone determines athletic success, and sports already accommodate broad physical diversity among cisgender female athletes. Transgender students are part of our school communities. They deserve the same chance to learn teamwork, discipline, and belonging that sports provide to anyone else. Excluding them doesn't make sports safer, it just makes them less fair and less compassionate. I'm aware that recently our federal government ruled on this, the same federal government that recently gutted the department overseeing special education that will negatively impact roughly 7.5 million students with disabilities across the country. They cut $1 billion in school-linked mental health grants. In my opinion, the current federal government is not who we should be looking for to guide our most marginalized students. If the Minnesota state laws change around trans athletes, I will reluctantly support it because adhering to law is important. However, currently that is not the case, and I will not be supporting anything related to what feels like discrimination, then they veil as something else. We are all welcome to lobby our legislators as private citizens, but I don't believe this belongs on a public school legislative priority platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hamlin. Any other comments? Director Freiberg?
Maybe we should consider doing something with like parental rights and curriculum transparency. I wrote down an idea, like affirm the right of parents to direct the education and moral development of their children. That would be something that, you know, that'd be huge. Require school districts to provide full access to curriculum materials, classroom resources, and library content, and support transparency in instructional materials and professional development to ensure parents remain fully informed partners in their child's education, something to that effect.
So sometimes you have to think, is that in statute or is that in policy? So we, you know, sometimes a school district can do some of that in policy and not necessarily in statute.
Well, for the legislative platform?
For the legislative platform, some of those items are policy-related issues that a district can do on their own because they already do. Just Superintendent Elmos, would you?
Yeah, I would think if you, you know, if you're going to put that as a statutory, something you want to see changed, I think the board would probably want to have a comprehensive understanding of what we currently do. And I think that's, there's probably a narrative to go with some of these, too, so when we do go down to the legislature, you can say specifically how it, how it plays out here. You know, that's one I think that you, you would want to probably spend some time saying, what can we legally do? What does our policy allow for before we put on a platform?
Not carrying any microphones, it's hard to hear back.
Superintendent Elmos, I, I think your microphone seems to be going in and out. Maybe if you and Chair Anderson could share it, that might.
I don't share.
It's just when you turn it. Okay.
Yeah, it's, no, well, well noted, Director Freiberg. I was just thinking, you know, I know some districts already implement that through policy.
Okay.
So that's another avenue. What you're doing is, one of the things we have to be careful for in the legislature is putting mandates on school districts and more legislation, let the I come back into the ISD, you know, the independent school district, because we're very dependent right now on St. Paul. And so push control down to the local level if we can do it.
Yeah, I just want parents to have more of a seat at the table in partnering with their child's education, so maybe that's something we can do in the future.
Yep, I think it's a good discussion for the policy committee, so if you have ideas.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you, Director Franzen. The next item on the agenda is the policies. We have the first reading. You can look at those policies, and if you have any comments or additions, you know, feel free to send them to me and Superintendent Elmos, and we'll bring those to the policy committee for review. The second reading right now, we recommend the school board approve the following policies. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes, if we could take these one by one versus just in a batch.
Versus slate, versus one by one, that's fine.
That would be helpful.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yep, I move to.
amend the motion?
amend the motion then, to have all the policies written out or voted on differently.
Singulately, okay. That's the motion. Do we have a second? Second? Any discussion? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. So we'll go on down the list. Do we have a motion to approve 506?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Director Nordos?
Just quick discussion on this. It's gone through the policy committee, we had lots of discussions. Of course, it's discipline, so, you know, I, I'm going to talk about it a little bit more just on intent. So I intend to vote to pass this as is tonight. We've talked a lot about the need to strengthen policy versus what's in procedure, and we agreed that we could move forward by strengthening procedure a little bit. Now, at last meeting, when we had the first reading, I made, made the comment that this is one of the only policies that requires procedure to be attached so that the board can see how the policy is being implemented, and we haven't done that in the past, and I'm, so when I brought that up, we said that we are going to attach these student handbooks to it. At the time, I hadn't had time to review all those, I have since, and it doesn't meet the intent of what this is. The student handbooks don't have the detail in them of how discipline is to, well, student handbooks are for students, not staff, right? And the intent of this is to see what the administrative procedures are to have staff implement our policy. We might have those, we may not, might not have those developed yet, so what I'm asking is that if by, if you do have those procedures already in place, if we could get those by January or so, I'm, I'm not setting a date that we're going to vote on, I'm just saying at some point, but maybe by next year, if they aren't, we could have those developed so we could attach those, so that the board has a better handle on, on some of these things we've been talking about.
Director Nordos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, ye- yes, but I also, it's, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself outlining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself explaining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself explaining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying. What I'd be looking for is what are the procedures? What are the procedures that the administration has developed that they're using to implement this?
Director Nortos, would you be willing to send an email to Superintendent Elmos and myself explaining exactly what you're looking for so we can bring it to the policy committee?
Well, yes, but I also, it's up for board discussion. I'm not guiding the administration to do something. The board needs to see if they agree with what I'm saying.
Almost, as our superintendent mentioned, we are going to be weaving in some of those compliance-based goals. So, we just wanted to share with you a little bit of background information about those plans. So, the first plan that you see up on the screen here is our Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Plan. Anytime you see this little blue oval up on the screen, that means that that's a goal that we are reporting out on in that plan. So, there are five goal areas required by MDE that you can see up on the screen. All children are ready for school. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career and college. All students graduate from high school. And this is a new goal with this new legislation around the plan, that we are preparing students to be lifelong learners. When this was the World's Best Workforce Plan, there was an additional goal that looked at third-grade reading. That's no longer a goal area required by CACR, but as a district, we're choosing to continue to monitor our students' academic achievement in that area. We are also reporting out on Achievement and Integration Plan. We're in year two, we'll be reporting out on year two. We're in year three of a three-year plan. The, the goal of Achievement and Integration is to pursue racial and economic integration and increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. So, any of the slides where you, where you see the green oval, that represents a goal area for A&amp;I. We have our presentation organized following our three pillars or buckets in our strategic plan. So, the first area that we're going to be diving into our indicators is in the area of achievement. And we are going to start with our youngest learners, so we're going to take a peek at some of our early childhood indicators. So, up here on the screen, on our right-hand side, you can see the number of children that were screened. So, in Minnesota, the law requires early childhood screening for children between the ages of three and five before entry into K. So, you can see the different amount of students at age three, four, five, and then we always catch a few when they come into kindergarten at age six to get screened. From those 856 screened children, that resulted in 184 individual students being referred for early childhood special education referral, to see if they needed to be evaluated. The number that you see on the left-hand side, the 413, doesn't represent individual students. It actually represents the number of different concern areas. So, you can see the different areas listed there of the concerns that came forward in those screenings. So, one student might have concerns in multiple areas. It's a little interesting way to look at the data there, but it gives you a sense of the different types of concerns that are coming forward in those referrals. We also have in the early childhood area, some enrollment data to report out on. On the left-hand side, you can see the children enrolled in our preschool programming. So, we have a total of 807 students. 265 of those students are students who are on IEPs, and the, the rest of the students are public registration students. On the right-hand side, we use a measure in early childhood called the TS Gold, and this is an authentic developmental assessment, where we look at how students are progressing in their developmental milestones. And just to pull out one example, just to help you understand how that chart reads, in the literacy domain, so you can see, we, we measure multiple different domain areas. In the fall, 75.4% were meeting or exceeding expectations, and by the spring, 95.65% were meeting or exceeding expectations for literacy, which is great news for us, because these students often become our kindergarteners. And then, this piece of data also speaks to how ready students are when they're entering K. And so, this is looking at our Fall Fast Bridge benchmarks, and you can see in reading, 69% of students in the fall of their kindergarten year were at or above benchmark, and in math, 80% of the students were at or above benchmark. And that just speaks to the skill level of our students, many of which who took part in our early childhood programming, and we know that that really sets them up for success as they transition into K. This slide just speaks again to all children are ready for school, that goal from CACR, and you can see the specific goal listed there and the result of that goal. Next, we're going to move into our reading indicators, starting with our MCA Reading Proficiency data. So, this graph is looking at our reading scores over time from 2021 to 2025. The blue bar represents the state, and the salmon-colored bar represents our district. As you can see, as a district, we've continued to outperform, outperform the state significantly this past spring by just over 11%. Overall, our proficiency in reading on the MCA has remained stable, and this is an area that we're putting a lot of resources and energy into, as we discussed at your retreat in August. We also wanted to point out our reading proficiency on the MCA by our subgroups. This graph allows us to dig a little bit deeper into the data. So, you can see along the bottom, our different subgroups, students who qualify for our meal program, special education services, our English learners, and our students of color. And what I want to highlight here, without going through each one individually, is how well our students in these subgroups are performing relative to the state. You can see there's a pretty big discrepancy there, and I just think that that's important to call out, because we really are focusing on educating all of our learners, which this goal from CACR really gets at, closing that achievement gap with our at-risk learners. We also have a goal in here around increasing racial and economic integration. As Superintendent Almost mentioned, we are reporting out on these measures that are a part of the plan, as part of the presentation tonight, but just in the interest of time, I'm not going to read word-for-word what's on there. This is attached to the agenda. We also have a goal around reducing achievement discrepancies. This is broken into two different goal areas. The first one, looking at the proficiency rate for students of color on the MCA reading, and then the second goal is looking at proficiency rate for students eligible for federal lunch subsidies. So, it's two different subgroups of students, and then we report out on, on progress towards those goals, and we, we did make progress in both of those areas. The next one is increasing equitable access to effective and more diverse teachers. Again, this is a Goal A and a Goal B. The first goal is looking at increasing the number of secondary educators trained in avid strategies. Progress toward that goal was made. And the second goal listed up there was increasing the elementary educators trained in recognizing and responding to bullying, bias, and microaggressions, and that goal was met previous, in a previous year, with elementary educators being trained. This graph is very colorful. This is looking at, we're shifting from MCA reading to our A reading scores. So, for those of you who are familiar with our Fast Bridge measures, this one is looking at our proficiency, and in a minute, we're going to look at our growth. So, what you have up on the screen here is looking at the percentage of students per grade level that are in our college pathway. That's the green color. The blue color represents students who are in the low-risk category, the yellow in the summer risk, and the red in the high risk. So, as you can see here, we really want our students to be performing in that green or blue color, and the students who are in the red and yellow are the students that we are talking through and planning interventions for, and figuring out how we can help them reach proficiency on our measures. In addition to looking at proficiency, which is equally as important, is looking at growth. So, this graph is looking at the Fast Bridge measures as well, but looking at growth of students from fall to spring. So, this is fall of '24 to spring of '25 on that reading measure. So, you can see green here, it means aggressive growth. The gold color is typical, the red is modest, and the blue is flat. So, this is a, a measure that our educators are using frequently at all levels throughout our system. They're looking at it at the individual student level for growth, they look at it at the classroom level, they look at it at the grade level, and they look at it as a whole school. It's a very important measure that we use. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rock to talk about math.
So, we are using similar measures in math that we're using in reading. So, you're going to see data that looks very similar to what Ms. Nord showed in the area of reading proficiency. So, both MCAs and our FAST data. So, you can see here, we have our MCA math proficiency, looking from 2021 to 2025. So, again, just like in the area of reading, we are significantly outperforming the state, so about 15 percentage points above the state in the area of reading, but we are fairly flat in terms of our proficiency in the area of math. You might remember that we are in the middle of a math curriculum review. So, we are currently piloting new math materials in elementary, middle, and high school, and we expect to bring recommendations to you with those resources in February of this school year, and adopt those, and implement those in the fall. The state, as you probably recall, adopted new math standards last spring, and those will be implemented in the fall of 2027. So, we are excited about that, and, and again, we are significantly outperforming the state in math proficiency on the state assessment. Again, here, just like Ms. Nord shared in the area of reading, we are significantly outperforming the state with our subgroups. So, great achievement in this area, as she pointed out, for all of our students in these We are also sharing data with you with our Fast Bridge proficiency. So, again, as a reminder, the green is college pathway, the blue is low-risk, and then we develop interventions and plans for students that are in the yellow and the red. So, you can see very consistent across grades two through eight in those areas. This measure, the AMATH, is not given at grade K and 1. And then, this chart shows growth from fall to spring, just like in the area of reading. So, the green and the kind of goldenrod color are showing typical and aggressive growth, and then the red and the blue show modest or fast growth. So, educators use this, again, as a data tool. This assessment is given three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and then we use this to plan for instruction for our students. The next indicator that we want to talk about is college and career readiness indicators. So, one of the things that is sometimes challenging, because we don't have as much assessment data, we don't do the benchmarking in the same way for high school that we do in elementary and middle school. So, the, one of the main tools that we use at the high school level is career and college readiness. I shared this data with you, I think at the beginning of the school year, or maybe last summer, around our Advanced Placement data. So, we have a number of students who take advanced placement courses. It's one of our career and college readiness initiatives, and you can see this data from 2023 to 2025, the amount of students who received college cred, what's the equivalent of college credit for the courses that they took. At the end of the class, they take an assessment, where they get a score from a 1 to a 5. In most colleges, if you get a 3, a 4, or a 5, you'll be awarded the equivalent college credit for that. So, in the last, from 2023 to 25, 25, 10% more of our students received college credit for that. So, we're really proud of that, both for our students and our educators, who are doing just an amazing job. The ACT composite, this is a college entrance exam that's given nationally. One of the, so you can see our data here. Nationally, green, state, and then the district is the salmon color. One of the things that's unique about this assessment is, it's not being used for college entrance, like it may have been used for you and I when we went to college, and so students are only taking it one time, unlike probably some of us who took it more than once. You can see our data here. So, we're, we've been relatively flat, we're very consistent with the state on this assessment. You can see our CACR goal here. We do not actually have this data yet, because it's not released until October, so once we get it, we'll share it with the board in an update. Another CACR goal is graduation rate. If you recall, this data, we're always a year behind. So, the state calculates us a year behind, so we have 2024 data. We'll receive 2025 data in about April or early May of next school year. We've been pretty consistent with this over the last three years, around 89% to 90% of college, high school graduates within four years. And here is a new goal, post-high school training or education. So, the way this reads is, graduating students attending some form of formal post-high school training or education within two years of their graduation is how we're calculating that. And so, we are at 68%, and we are using data from the National Clearinghouse that we get that information. So, that's going to be our baseline measure, because this is the first year we have to report on that. The next thing we wanted to share some information on from you, with you is stakeholder feedback indicators. So, this, we thought was important to include for you in, as one of our measurement tools. And so, we want to monitor some baseline data in the area of achievement. We selected these two areas as some things we thought would be good to monitor. In the parent domain, the school has high expectations for my child at 82%. In the student domain, remembering that we surveyed students, grades 4 through 12, I feel safe at school, 88%. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Almost to talk about his goals.
Yeah, so, with alignment here, we wanted to make sure that my goals were highlighted here. We also, in, in, in anticipation of you approving your goals, we also put yours in here coming up. So, mine are listed here, just as a reminder, that center-based programming was a priority for you, and you asked that of me to look at that. The setting for special education programming, we've had some conversations, some more about that tonight. The Minnesota REED Act, implementation of the REED Act is listed here, and you, you've seen, heard some conversation about the data related to that? And student achievement data overall, the MCA data with maintaining the 80th percentile or better of all districts in Minnesota, and the Fast Bridge growth data that, that we had talked about back when my goals were set.
We're going to shift gears from achievement and talk about our partnership strategic indicators. And here, we also pulled out some of our stakeholder feedback, school perceptions data, to monitor our baseline data. So, the survey items that we pulled out of here, that really pertain to partnerships, where our parents and communities support the school district, that was from the staff survey, and that was 77%. And the district seeks input from a broad group of staff members, and that was from the staff survey at 45%. So, we're anticipating that we'll be doing the survey again in the spring, and want to be monitoring that baseline data. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Almost for his goals and partnership.
Yeah, and then for me, in the area of partnership, it was the foster partnerships with our local businesses. Get out and be known in, in the community is what you've asked of me as the new superintendent, and we're tracking those, those interactions and those partnership conversations.
The next area we're monitoring is operations strategic indicators, and we also pulled data from the school perceptions data. We're monitoring some baseline data in this area. And so, what we selected here was, I have opportunities for training or professional development to improve my work in the staff domain at strongly agree or agree, 85%.
And then, the goal you've asked of me on the operations side is the facility planning, bringing that five-to-10-year plan to address our capacity concerns in the South. As we talked about, a lot of work happening with that currently.
And so, in the summary section, what we have is a chart for you with our three strategic plan areas under achievement, partnerships, and operations. You can see we've kind of summarized each of the things we've talked about today, and then we have indicators down at the bottom. The things that have a square by them are one of Superintendent Almost's goal, and then we have proposed school board goals with the triangle next to them, to kind of help us kind of show the alignment across our system.
And as we wrap up, I would just say that, again, these two plans are a little bit on the compliance side of things. These are, these are prescribed in law, some of the things we have to focus on. And so, as we, as we present the data to you, sort of like, this is where we've come, and this is the indicators of the instruction we've provided, I would ask the board maybe to have a discussion about going forward. Is this the information? We have to comply with some of it, but is there more information or things you'd like to see different with us when we bring this to you to update you on the strategic plan? And with that, we'll stand for questions or, or input from the board.
Questions from the board? I did have one question on your chart, Fast Bridge reading growth from fall to spring, '24, '25. I don't know what slide number that is.
That's okay.
That one.
Yep.
So, if we looked at this chart, what, what students are affected by the REED Act right now? I know the K through 3, you know, but, but I mean, it just was implemented. You, you understand the question?
I think so.
I just want to look at, the REED Act, we should be seeing some improvement.
So, right now, in terms of the REED Act, we are working across K8. Our new resource that we started implementing just last year was K5, so that's the Functional Phonics and Morphology resource. And we presented at the retreat on some of the gains that we've seen in that. This is just looking at the growth from fall to spring. This year, we'd have to compare it to the growth from like the previous year, to see if we had increased growth from one year to the next. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it's just be interesting to see, you know, there, there should be a shift.
Yep, and we're monitoring that super closely all the time, looking at that data.
So, when you find those, let us know.
I, I would also share that our educators in grades K through 5 are the ones that are going through the training. They'll be completed with that this year, and then Phase 2 of the training is for middle school and high school educators of reading is happening in, starting next year. So, our elementary educators are finishing the training this year, and so that's where we'll also see some significant change, as people become trained in the science of reading and start to implement those pieces.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. The next presentation will be from Dr. Joe Stangler, Director of Student Services, Research and Planning, will report on the enrollment.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Anderson, Superintendent Almost, members of the school board. It's my pleasure tonight to give you just a brief enrollment update about where we're starting the school year, and this is similar to the reports you've seen, received from me before, so the same type of information. So, we'll be looking at our unofficial October 1 counts. They do not become official until our final fall submission in January, but give you an idea of where we, where we at, at this point in time. Take a look at overall enrollment and growth, take a brief look at cohort progression, and then also our regional enrollment and growth. So, as you can see here, our overall student increase on October 1 was 231 students. This is our K12 enrollment, and does include our ALC, our special programs, basically our K12 enrollment. That is 1.6%. The next chart is just a grade-by-grade enrollment on October 1 for the past six years, and you can see how our enrollment has changed during that time. The yellow group, that was, for quite some time, the smallest cohort of students in our system. Back in 2021, they were in grade 4 at 936 students. You can see this fall, in 9th grade, they're at 1,042. So, that, that cohort has grown by over 100 students since the, the fall of '20-21. Our new lowest enrollment group is actually kindergarten. When you look at the chart, you can see our kindergarten enrollment has been in the low 1,000 area, but you can see that group of students that had been the lowest cohort added quite a few students as they entered 9th grade this year. Taking a look at the elementary by itself, and when I say elementary, I'm talking K5. So, that includes students at Prairie View Middle School and Rogers Middle School are part of this graph, showing that our elementary enrollment grew by 38 students this year. The interesting part is, when you look at the cohort progression, you'll see the numbers on the right-hand side. The negative 4, that's just kindergarten, but the 42, that represents grade 1 grew by 42 students compared to kindergarten. And then, grade 2 grew by 67 students compared to first grade. You might think, well, how did you only grow by 38 students? If I had my pointer, we would look at the line, that's, I'm glad I included that, the 1161, that was 5th grade leaving, heading into middle school, and that was replaced with 1,020 kindergartners. So, at the elementary level, we were down 140 students just by rotating 5th grade out and bringing a new kindergarten in. So, we actually grew by over 170 students to actually have a net of 38. And I point that out because growth is a major factor in our future as a district. It's been a major factor in our past as well, as we're seeing it in the future, and as Director Madsen noted, demographically, kindergarten birth, or excuse me, birth rates are decreasing, so that matriculation of students into the district is becoming more and more important as we move forward. At the secondary level, you can see our enrollment increased by 193 students. This is all students in grades 6 through 12. And once again, looking at the cohort progression, you will notice, I always point out 12th grade. 12th grade is a little bit inflated because of the students who return. So, we have Ivan Sands students who are seniors. We also have Compass students upstairs who are seniors. We have some special education students in buildings who return for an additional year after their senior year. That's why that growth at the senior level is sometimes overrepresented, but you can see with the remainder of it, we actually graduated 1128 from last year and replaced them with 1153. So, there was a net positive on the rollover, plus additional growth, which is why we saw such strong growth at our secondary buildings this year. Next, we'll take a look at regional enrollments. And for regional enrollments, we only count students that are basically, we refer to, in their feeder school system. So, the four elementary schools in Elk River feed to the two middle schools, which feeds to Elk River High School. We do not include Compass Focus Journey and Ivan Sands, because they don't have true feeders. And then also, online high school, the vast majority of online high school students are part-time online, so we count them in their traditional home school, as far as enrollment's go for this purpose. At the southern end of our district, you can see the continued growth in overall student enrollment. So, this is K12 in the southern schools of, that includes the communities of Rogers and Atsego. You can see we grew by 270 students over last year. This is the grade-by-grade enrollment, and what you can see, it's kind of like what I showed in the previous two charts, looking at the 11th and 12th grade as they leave the system, what's being replaced in kindergarten and first grade. And you can see, for quite some time, there was a natural growth just with rollover. We're starting to see the classes, not consistently yet, but we're starting to see those classes become larger at 11th and 12th grade, and more stable with kindergarten and first grade, which could slow the growth a little bit in the South, but we're still seeing the growth. This chart just shows the actual enrollment at the elementary schools in the South, the, excuse me, elementaries, middle, and high school. The bold underlined numbers, that is when Prairie View Middle School opened as a separate facility, because it was part of the E8 originally, but that's when also Rogers Middle School added 5th grade to their middle school, and the elementary schools moved to K4. In the center of the district, you can see we had a 16-student decrease from last year, pretty stable as far as the line goes. What I see with, or what we see with the middle of the district, if you go back to '20-21, every- '20-21, every grade level at the high school was over 400, and we were, we've consistently been bringing in kindergartens in the high 300s. What we're starting to see, if you go to '25-'26, we're starting to see the senior or the high school classes shrink a little bit, and they're coming in closer to 400 or slightly under 400. What that means is, we're probably not going to see the decrease in the center of the district. It's probably going to stabilize because we're still seeing growth in the center of the district, but the rollout of seniors and the roll-in of kindergartens was, was taking up so many students. Once again, here are the enrollments in the center of the district for the elementaries, middle, and high schools. In the northern end of the district, we did see a 38-student decrease this year. Predominantly, it's with kindergarten. We saw a very low kindergarten come in. Our preschool numbers indicated that it was going to be slightly smaller than last year, but you can see, over the past six years, we've had a 159 or 160, and then this year, a 144 in kindergarten. The, the north, the Zimmerman schools have consistently, the high school numbers have been pretty consistent. We're watching that kindergarten number with a lot of concern, attention, just to see what comes in next year. Because you can see, historically, we had one dip, and then we recovered with a 180 and a 170. Where, are we going to see the same thing, or are we seeing a consistent trend with enrollment dropping in the north? And once again, here are the individual schools in the north. So in general, our southern enrollment continues to grow. All of the schools in Rogers, not the south, but the schools in Rogers, have exceeded their design capacity. The central enrollment continues to decrease, but we're watching that for future trends. Northern enrollment decreased. We're, like I said, we're keeping an eye on that to see what that holds for the future as far as enrollment goes. Next, the next time we come to you, we'll be bringing our enrollment and projections. Given some of the discussions, we may have to bring, we typically wait until January 1 numbers. We may need to bring this earlier this year because of a lot of the other considerations that are being considered by the school board and by other parts of the district. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Stangler?
Just real quick clarification. So it appears some of the numbers changed a little bit, but it still matches the Hazel study. So it's fair to say that that, that study was accurate with what you're finding, and that all our growth is in the South?
Yeah, for this year, what we're seeing is what the, the study indicated, that we would see growth, but it would all be in the South. So I think, at least for this year, and signs would be for the next couple of years, we're, we're expecting that to play out.
Stretch it to 10 years?
That was their projection. We, I think, each year, that was their projection. That's what our projections say as well, but as we look at the numbers, I would say confidently, within five years, that is the scenario that will play out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Stangler? If not, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on now, we have the Elk River Education Association Master Agreement, and we want to thank our administration and the EREA for all the work that they've done on this contract. I know you met quite a few hours into this process, and so thank you for your perseverance in getting us the contract. And first resolution that we have is, the board recommends that they approve the resolution directing Board Member Hamlin to abstain from voting on the collective bargaining agreement between ISD 728 and the EREA. And the reason why is, your husband is a employee of the district, teaches social studies at Zimmerman. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. No offense, Director Hamlin. Now to the master agreement. We recommend the school board approve July, the July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027 master agreement between Independent School District 728 and the Elk River Education Association. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Chair Anderson, were we going to talk about what it will do for the, the numbers for next year, our budget, and where we're at?
That is, I, I'll let our Superintendent Almost answer that. Yeah, if you look at the bottom of the document, where it's provided, the, the settlement actually meets the, the parameters that the board had set for the 8% fund balance. So at this time, we would, we would say that we met or exceeded that parameter, and that it should fit in well with the budget and plan for the upcoming session.
I can't remember which policy number the fund balance is under. It's 200-something. Director Steinberger, you should know this.
I don't recall.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and congratulations on the work that you've done on that, both the EREA and the administration. Thank you. Finally, we're down to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to pull out of the consent agenda tonight?
If we pull out Londa's retirement, does she stay?
We have a, we want to pull out Londa's retirement?
I wholeheartedly agree.
Is that a motion to recommend her for another 40 years of employment?
Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Notice information, updating dates of importance. Number six, October 16th and 17th, no school. Conferences for elementary and secondary in daytime, no school October 15th. On October 14th, conferences in the evening. Next policy committee meeting is October 20th, that's a Monday at 4:00 PM here in the district office, and our next work board, or school board work session is October 27th. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.